Good evening, everyone. We're going to call to order the Hicksville Exempted Village School Board meeting. Call to order, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Iden?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Mazur?
Here.
Mr. Methman?
Here.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Here.
Let's all rise with a Pledge of Allegiance. Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone. Nice to have visitors. First, we have a presentation from Jerry Hayes from the Defiance County Economic Development.
Thank you. Good to see you. Been a while since I've been over. I come with what I think will be good news for the district. We've received an application for a new enterprise zone agreement for Hillendale Farms of Ohio, LLC. As you know, they are located in Hicksville Township just inside your school district as well. Back in 2013, when Hillendale came and looked at Defiance County, their master plan included a plan to erect eventually sixteen layer houses. And tonight I bring you details on the last three of those, numbers fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. Hillendale is proposing to construct the three additional layer houses. That is an approximate investment of $5.3 million, and some associated driveway and site work that adds about another $601,000 to that. To the real property investment is over $7 million. The remainder of the proposed investment is personal property, namely $4 million worth of equipment, additional egg sorting and handling equipment, some more electric work, things like that. Total project investment estimated at $19, excuse me, $19,841,000. In the project, Hillendale is proposing hiring of fourteen additional workers. In their status report that they turned in, based on December 31st, 2019 appointment, they showed 126 persons employed at the complex then. So this would put them at roughly 140 total employees. As you probably recall, back in 2013, we did do an enterprise zone agreement for them. The real property investment on that was roughly $20 million, total investment of nearly $41 million. And then in 2018, we did an amendment to that 2013 agreement where they added in additional work that was roughly $2 million in real property. So as it stands today, they have one enterprise zone agreement amended in 2018. It is in either year six or seven. When we did the amendment in 2018, we did not extend the term of that original agreement. So that's where we stand today. According to the guidelines issued by the Defiance County Board of Commissioners, the proposed new project of $19 million would qualify for up to an 80% exemption for up to 12 years' term. Because of the nature of the buildings that are being erected, we are proposing a 10-year term, not a 12-year term. And at present time, we're proposing an 80% exemption on the real property only. There is no personal property tax in Ohio anymore. So I come to you with that information tonight. Hillendale got this to me not too long ago, and they do wish to get started sometime in July. So this morning, I had a regular monthly update with County Board of Commissioners and asked them about their support for the agreement as presented. And they are very interested in the Hicksville School Board's information on this, your reaction, your input, your feeling about this. So what I'm here to ask for is acknowledgement and receipt of the information about it. And then you have the right to provide comment to the Defiance County Commissioners about anything that you want to present from the school board's and district's perspective. So entertain any questions or discussion.
Why is this good news? That's why I wondered.
Fourteen additional new jobs and $19 million being invested in your school district.
Do you have any idea how many of the 140 employees are homeowners?
We don't.
I would bet very few, but if they're living in our community and renting, the landlords are considering the taxes that, you know, that's included in their rent, you know, you figure that in. So that would still be, I mean, they're still paying taxes through their rent because the landlords are doing that. Okay.
And the school district income tax.
It seems like when new industry comes in, the thing they're looking for is do you have a good school district that's producing kids that are able to be good workers? Okay? So it seems ironic to me that the school district takes the hit in the tax money. You know, we're supposed to be getting these kids as well-educated as we possibly can, but yet the school is the person that takes the hit on the tax money.
Well, what do you mean by hit? I mean, there would be additional taxes paid to the district, as Mr. Ruins stated, if they live within the school district, they'd be paying the school income tax. Plus, you're still talking about 20% of the taxes on the unabated portion would be paid. So I don't see you taking the hit. I see you partnering on the sharing of increased revenue.
I think it's hard to ignore the absence of that 80%. Yes, we get 20% of the taxes, but there's 80% that's absent there, you know? And I think our state needs to shield schools from those abatements. I mean, you know, some states totally protect the school district's portion of the taxes, which, following up with what Minda said, you know, absolutely, when industry comes to town, when people are considering coming to town, when homeowners are considering building here, the schools are one of the number-one things they look at. Is this a good school district that I want my child to be in? You know, when we take pride in being a great school district and attracting those people, but when we as the school board are expected, you know, to accept the abatements and accept an 80% reduction in the taxes coming to us, when our federal funding is going down and we're going to our community members with a levy, asking them to help support the schools, but yet we're turning around and allowing businesses off the hook?
Oh, I don't know. But I think it's called a partnership.
But I think the part of our issue is we're, we may get 20%, but we're losing that. And part of it is it's a very transient population. And if you talk to Mr. Hunter and any of the, our principals, the amount of time that we're spending, and that's our job to teach and educate the kids, but when we only have them for two weeks, three weeks a month, and the amount of resources that we're dumping in, we're losing money. So...
And not only that, we also take a hit on the other side when it comes to report card, which again, when you have new people coming into town, what do they look for? They look at that report card, you know? So I think we're in a very difficult position, and I think the state puts us in a difficult position. And I think, no offense, I think the Economic Development Group puts us in a difficult position. Yes, we want industry, but man, an 80% abatement, and what about, you know, the gift in lieu, payment in lieu of taxes?
Yes.
At this time, Hillendale has not proposed any, but we're still in a period where we could talk about that. So I am here tonight to listen, interested in your thoughts and what you think would be equitable. That's my job, to represent the community, manage the business. I would remind the board that, you know, we were in competition with other states, namely Michigan, on this project back in 2013. And that investment decision went in our favor, most likely because of the things that the county, the township, and the school did. You know, I always look at all of the relationships and, you know, I understand the school board's perspective, but, you know, Hicksville Grain, they got a nice contract to supply some of the feed ingredients for this. There's many aspects to it. But I'm not here to, you know, advocate for any particular thing. I'm here to present the application and to take back your thoughts and wishes to the Board of County Commissioners.
Jerry, we're very grateful Hillendale Farms chose to build in our school district, for sure.
Yes.
And we're grateful knowing that we're going to give an additional 20%, additional income tax. We just, we're hit right now a little bit with some cuts from the state, and, you know, when we look at that...
And that's what I want to say. I mean, from seven years, we're in a very different spot than we were seven years ago when, you know, when this first happened. I think Mike would speak to, I mean, it's just a different financial position right now. It's a different environment that we have right now than we did.
But we also recognize the fact that we are going to be getting more collections from taxes because of this project. Not, we'll be missing 80% of it, but we're still grateful for the portion that we will be given.
Have any of these abatements, like, I don't remember that we've gotten any of this pilot money, payment in lieu of taxes. I don't remember getting any of that in the last years.
The last one I remember is FWT. FWT gave us $45,000. That's the last one that I remember.
That was an Oprah, right?
Yeah.
The Avenue of the Beach, our football...
Our lights.
They, they used to be kind of popular, the payment in lieu of, and then the state penalized the school districts for receiving them. So if you were getting payment in lieu of pilot payments, then they factored that into your wealth, and it negatively affected your foundation funding. So that was in place for a number of years. I'm going to guess, I don't know, Jerry, do you know, four, five years ago, they kind of lifted that?
Right.
So there was this push to having the pilots, and then we got penalized if we had them. So people got away from them, and then the law allowed it to happen again without punishment. But I think it's been slow going back for whatever reason. So...
Just on the history I just commented, I've been doing this 20 years, and at one time, pilots were very popular. We probably, out of, we only have probably eight or nine enterprise zone agreements active. And that's mostly because of the elimination of personal property tax. But out of those eight, I'm only aware of two pilot agreements out of the eight. So they're not as big of a factor as they used to be. My informal advice would be to perhaps, you know, put in a request for some reduction on the percentage. And I think that would be received with open ears at the courthouse.
I think that's a good idea.
So what is the law on that percentage, though? It gets below a certain percentage, and then...
On agreements of 75% for 10 years or less, the law says that you are entitled to notice. The law also encourages discussion with, in our case, the county commissioner, but the threshold is 75% for 10 years.
I'm sure we can break them back.
Sure. That's not much, but...
And, you know, I don't, I'm not here to try and persuade you. I mean, this school district was very supportive of the Village of Hicksville CRA. That incentive for both residential and business-type stimulus would have never went anywhere without your support. So you have always been great partners here in Hicksville School District.
These are a little different, though, aren't they, Jerry? Because it doesn't really matter whether we want it to come in or not. It's going to come.
Yeah.
So it's just, what we're doing here is somewhat specious in a way, because it's going to happen. You just want some goodwill, and you want, you know, and we are reminded, yes, some money is better than no money, a little bit more than what we had before. But it is still somewhat frustrating to, to have to, and I know that these hits aren't all financial hits, but what Mr. Iden was saying about, you know, teaching the kids in the classroom, that, that's, that's a hit emotionally on most of us in this room.
We'd like to have these kids for, for good, you know? That's what we want. We can work with them and, and put the time in, and, you know, that's, I think that's what we all want, so.
Absolutely. So not asking for any decisions, might I would simply ask that you provide some feedback, either through my office or directly to the Commissioner's office, on what you would prefer to see happen. And I'm sure that, as I said, that that will be listened to. So tomorrow night, I'm visiting Hicksville Township trustees, and then on Thursday, Fort County Career Center. And we do want to expedite this through and try to get it done, hopefully in the first part of July.
So they need to write something, or you just are taking our comments?
It can be either way. You're entitled to provide written comments to the Board of County Commissioners. And normally, I would provide you with the date, time that they intend to consider this, but we haven't quite said that yet. It kind of depends on what you want to do and what the township and Fort County reply with. We do want to get it going and let them know as soon as we can.
But we can't stop it, correct?
I don't think you can stop it unless you could persuade the county commissioners that it wasn't a good idea. But you certainly could influence the terms.
Okay.
The 75%. I don't know that we, I mean, we wouldn't want to stop it. It's good business.
Yeah, I don't want to stop it either.
It's good for the, you know, the community. It's good to have those extra jobs coming in. We do appreciate that.
No, I'm not here to definitely want to stop it.
But, you know...
You want to get the best partnership terms you can.
Exactly.
Very good.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
Thanks, Jerry.
Principal reports. Mr. Slattery.
All right. Okay, well, good evening, everyone. Of course, last time we met, we were discussing kind of the closure of this distance learning school year and kind of, you know, the challenges and the opportunities that we've had working with our students and our staff. I am extremely happy to say that commencement has come and gone, and it was, I think, very successful. I know that we have a lot of people, not just parents, but an entire community that really cares for every single graduating class at Hicksville. And I do appreciate all my peers that are the GMC in Northwest Ohio and Defiance County, and I appreciate all the support from the board and superintendent, the principals, and everyone. Just, just a few things as a reminder, you know, we did do the single-family in-person commencement, and it was all, all hands-on-deck opportunity for us to show our parents and students that we really cared about their commencement. And I felt that, you know, with the help of, you know, Mr. Countryman, I mean, he was there to hand out diplomas, Mr. Bassett and his staff setting up. We had, you know, Mr. Josh Freeze and Mr. Murphy, they were more than willing to assist in us handing out diplomas for nearly 20 hours over three days to make sure every single family had that opportunity to see their student walk across the, the stage and receive their diploma. We also had, you know, the Class of 2021 stepped up, and they sponsored a photo shoot. And Brandy Rosebrot came in, took pictures, and again, she was here for that full 20 hours also, and that was, that was awesome. The Class of 2022, they created a senior tribute video that was posted online, YouTube, on our social media sites, and we appreciate that. Becky Zedek, the PTO for the yard signs that were placed here at the premises here, and of course, all the students received those. We had the Class of 2020, which had some remaining funds over, to assist us in getting the banners that were downtown. And that was huge for the community, and I think it was huge for the parents and the recognition. And again, I say this, sometimes, you know, we don't recognize the logistics and the amount of time and effort it takes from so many different people to make things like that happen. And we need to make sure that we thank, you know, the city of Hicksville and the workers up there for taking the time to not only hang up those signs and eventually take them down, but also, you know, we had a large class, we had 79 graduates in this class, and I think there was only like 64 locations to hang, you know, front and back, 64 banners. So they were creative, and they added some additional time and effort into making sure that all 79 graduates could have a banner hung. And then, of course, you know, as I mentioned Eric Bassett and his staff, you know, we had Jeff Hawt here, and we had a handful of other people, and I apologize if I forget, who came in during those three days and assisted us in making sure it was special. And then, of course, from that point forward, you know, we wanted to still make sure that we had a, you know, a commencement on May 31st, and that the video was completed, it was edited, it was all put together, which was awesome, and presented on the original date and time on May 31st at 2:00 PM. Ended up being a little bit longer than we expected, so we kind of postponed the next event. But again, we had the switching to the tassel as a whole group, and the mortarboard toss, and of course, the caravan for the Class of 2020, that all happened here on, you know, on our campus, and then it worked out in the community. You know, Cody Rice, he, he's an employee at Jim Schmitz. He actually has a drone that has like HD-quality video footage and stuff. He came out and assisted us with taking the video footage of those events. And then, of course, Mr. Murphy and Mr. Freeze came out, and, you know, they assisted with that. And, and again, it was all about having an opportunity to bring everyone together, and they were together for those last few events of their commencement, again, of the mortarboard toss and the switching to the tassel, which was awesome. And I think that provided a lot of closure. And then thank you to the, you know, the community of Hicksville for coming out for the caravan, because it was a great turnout. And believe me, I said a lot of prayers and was hoping for good weather and a good turnout. I know we send out a lot of instant alerts at times, but, you know, it's because we want what's best for these kids and the graduates of 2020. So thank you, everyone, who was involved in that. And like I said, it was an awesome opportunity. It was, it was challenging. I'm glad that I was able to, I guess, work through those challenges, and again, have the support that I had from everyone involved. Outside of that, you know, just a couple items. It is June, the collection of district-doned items. Of course, all our seniors dropped off all their items prior to commencement, and, and that was great, so we had everything we needed from them. The K-11 items, of course, and I'm sure they may mention this, we collected those for two days following Memorial Day, and there's still a handful of individual students that were still tracking some items down. But overall, I would, I would assume probably 98% of everything that we gave out, devices and everything, are back in our hands. And then, of course, you know, a lot of, a lot of busy work right now, you know, we're, we're dealing with closing, closing out the 2019-2020 school year, and then, of course, we're already preparing for the 2020-2021 school year. Thank you.
Mr. Hunter.
Like Mr. Slattery said, the returning of school supplies went a lot better than, than I thought it was going to go. But we had four different times over two different days. We had a lot of stuff to give back to the kids, especially on the elementary level, and a lot of stuff to return as far as school books, computers, awards to give out, things like that. Great, great response. I would say that, like Mr. Slattery said, probably 90, 98% of the stuff has been returned. I spend time calling everybody, and I know Mrs. Kaufman sends out instant alerts to drive them nuts until they bring their stuff back in. So, but we're getting the stuff, and we're kind of completing that, so. Lately here, I've been finishing up the middle school schedule, and I am excited to have Mrs. Chamberlain, I think I've talked about this once or twice, but we're offering the Rocks program next year for every seventh-grade girl. And I'm really excited to offer that. Ruling our experiences is what that is. And it's kind of a, a girls' group where they work on empowering females, giving themselves some pride, some, some self-respect, and some things that I think are really important for some middle schoolers. On the flip side of that, what we're going to be doing is offering a service learning project. We were able to put that into the kid's rotation schedule this next year. So some kids will be doing that, the other kids will be doing the service learning project, and then they'll actually be flipping, and she'll be working with the guys on a different program on respecting themselves and respecting others, while the girls then work on doing a service learning project. So I'm really excited about that. I think that's something that'll be, hopefully, a really unique and interesting thing that, that goes in place in the middle school next year. One thing that I do think with all this COVID happening and things going on, schools next year are going to have gaps in education, and we know that going into it. So I've been working lately on putting together some kind of a gap analysis where all of our teachers are going to be able to kind of start looking at some of the things that they didn't teach this school year, that, that following teacher's going to say, oh, boy, I need to make sure that I'm really hitting on that. I've been working on that, putting something together that maybe in August that we'll be able to roll out to the teachers to start immediately thinking about what gaps they have in learning and education that we can, we're going to have to kind of band-aid over. So I think that's important. Also been looking at some of our PD next year with Mr. Countryman and what some of that stuff might look like. I think it's going to have a COVID theme to it, whether we're here, we're not here, how we go about that, and how do we make sure that we have clean and safe surfaces? How are kids eating lunches and washing hands? And if it ends up being blended, how are we going to be able to go to that format and switch seamlessly? So I think that'll have a, a heavy impact on our professional development next school year and our plans for next school year. But that's kind of what I've been doing lately.
School supplies will be available to any families that qualify for free and reduced lunches during this last school year, or any family that has experienced financial challenges. And if they are interested in the school supplies from Tools for Schools, they just need to contact the Hicksville Community Service Center by July 3rd. And then the items will be distributed on August 14th and 15th at the Lifeline Connect Ministry Center. So just a huge thanks to Susan Mack for, again, heading up this program, and I do know that she is mentoring the PTO so they can take over this process next year. It's a, it's a, just a great service to our community, and so I just really appreciate it. Just waiting on, I was hoping that I could report to you the title money from the state. They said it could be announced as early as today, but as of 5:30, they still had not announced that yet. So just working on finishing up the CCIP items and just the requisitions and needs for our next school year.
Yeah, just to add a little bit, on the, the CCIP, we get our allocation for the next year, so it'd be Title I, IDEA, Part B, Special Ed, Early Child Special Education, Title III for language learners and stuff. The state has a date of July 1st to have their application, to have our application done, and they say it can affect you negatively if you don't have your application done, more ways than one. But it's also difficult sometimes because we're sitting here at June 15th. They said they would have that information, the allocations, to us today, and we still don't have them. So will they come tomorrow? I hope so, but I've seen them later than June 16th before. So anyways, I know Kirsten's been working on that, I've been keeping an eye on it, and I think so have some of our other administrators. So we will attack that when we know more.
I just want to thank all three of you. You guys have done a great job, you know, wrapping up the school year and everything that's been going on. We really appreciate it. Jeff, just tremendous job with graduation. I heard a lot of positive remarks. So again, thank you to all three of you and your staff. You guys have done a great job.
There's a lot of things with the graduation. Obviously, we're completely different, but you know what? There's, there was a lot of memories, and I would have assumed some things will probably change in the future based on some of that. The parade was awesome. It'd be neat to do that every year.
Well, I've already had people on Facebook talking about we need to have the photos taken every year, we need to have the banners every year. I'm sure if we go out there, that would be awesome, but we've got to figure out a few things, and if we're going to be pulled out every year.
What was the percentage of kids that were here for the, the parade out of the class?
I believe we were, I believe we were missing two people.
Oh, wow.
Because we actually counted vehicles, I think there were actually like 72 vehicles, but there were two or three vehicles.
Had multiple kids.
And I was, I was informed that two people had not been, uh, on by my actual choice of being there. So, yeah, very curious.
That was neat. Well done.
Yeah.
Yep, for sure.
All right, um, I do not have an updated four county report at this time, so we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Yes, um, the, uh, four county area superintendents, uh, continue to meet, uh, we don't talk quite as often anymore on discussions and our discussions have switched to what the fall might look like, uh, when we come back, and obviously, there are no concrete decisions made yet, uh, requirements for opening up the school and that continues to change, uh, loosen up, which is a good thing, so, we're planning on coming back this fall, what it's gonna look like at this point, we're not real positive, but we know that, uh, locally, those discussions are gonna start happening now, more intense and, and of course, with the four county as well. Uh, all of our bus drivers and van physicals were completed on May 26th, we had, uh, our clinic, Activate Clinic, actually come here and do them this year, which worked out really well, and we had a hundred percent of our people show up to get the van and bus, uh, physicals, so that's all ready for next year. Uh, the building project out back continues to move forward, uh, the weather lately's been great, so they, they were able to get a lot of stuff caught up from, uh, when it did rain. Uh, the drive to 18 will get, uh, a layer of asphalt on it this week, uh, it should get this week, that's the plan anyway. Uh, the service drives have, uh, as I've mentioned before, will remain gravel through the building process and then next, uh, spring, summer, when they are finished, they'll asphalt all of that and make any necessary repairs to the drive to 18 because of all the construction traffic and put the final layer of asphalt on that as well. Um, they did start cutting the, uh, service drive in out back here now and they've put a fence up, I'm pretty sure that, uh, uh, they'll be out to complete that this week and then you won't be able to get back there at all, which people shouldn't go back there now because there's quite a drop-off, so. Um, they will also start, uh, the excavating of the pad for the building this week is the plan, so they'll be tearing that all up and getting that ready. Uh, I think that's it.
Okay. Mike, do our guest have the updated, um...
No.
Changes?
No, I, that was just finding some of those about five o'clock today, so...
Okay. So, uh, do I have a motion for minutes and financials?
I'll move.
Okay. Thank you, Craig. Thank you, Gail.
Minutes from the regular board meeting on, uh, May 18th of 2020, uh, the treasurer's consent agenda items, cash reconciliation of May 31st, 2020, financial statements of May 2020, amended certificate of estimated resources for fiscal year 2020 as presented, total grand fund resources of fourteen million, one hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents, and total resources of all funds of twenty-four million, six hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars. Fiscal year 2020 amended permanent appropriations as presented, total general fund approchi- appropriations of eleven million, three hundred, seventy-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents, and total appropriations for all funds of twenty million, one hundred and sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars and ninety cents. We are not approving line E. Um, line F, fiscal year 2021 temporary appropriations as presented, total general fund appropriations of five million, nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars, and total appropriation of all funds of seven million, five hundred and six thousand, one hundred dollars. The following historical s- scholarship as a standalone private purpose trust fund in order to increase transparency and accountability is being set up for the Colonel Stefan F.O. Mavis Memorial Scholarship Fund. And then finally, to authorize the treasurer to enter into a contract with Ohio School Plan for Insurance Coverage for the policy year of July 2020 to July 1st of 2021 at a premium cost, and this is an updated number of forty-two thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars. So again, that was forty-two thousand, one hundred and sixteen. Approve fiscal year 2020 five-year forecast as presented, cash balance as of June 30th, 2024, which is line 7.020 of one million, forty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars. Establishment of the following fund, um, for the class of 2024. Participation in the following federal and state funding projects for fiscal year 2021. Establish accounts and appropriate funds as directed below for Title I-A, Title III, IDEA, IDEA-B, E-S-S-E-R, Title II-A, Title IV-A, IDEA-E-C-S-E, and the bus fund. The following petty cash and change funds accounts for fiscal year 2021, there's several changes here. So the cafe does not have a fun, change fund, the elementary does not have a change fund, the athletics is one thousand, five hundred, the treasurer is five hundred, and the high school change fund is one hundred and twenty-five. Under petty cash, the athletic checking is two thousand, five hundred, the high school petty cash is one hundred dollars and the elementary school petty cash is one hundred and fifty dollars.
Those all correct, Mike?
Yes, they, those are correct.
And then finally, accept the following donations of one thousand, eighty dollars from the Columbus Foundation for the Colonel Stefan F.O. Mavis Scholarship Fund.
Comments, Mike?
Um, yeah, sorry about, well, some of those changes, um, but some of them are good. Got an update this morning, email on the insurance was able to, they sharpened their pencil a little bit more, got an extra thirteen hundred, three dollars off of the premium and, um, updated, let me see, the, going to item number five, the bus fund, that is something we've talked about before, the state had indicated that we were going to get just under fifty-two thousand dollars and, uh, our application is sitting in the CCIP, it's been sitting there now for months and months, the state has not addressed it. I think they're waiting to see what's gonna happen with the funding, um, I'm hopeful, well, I don't know, I hope that we get the fifty-one thousand, nine hundred dollars, but, um, with things going on, I think that's one of the reasons why that's kind of in a stall mode, probably to determine what they're going to do with actual allocation of those dollars. And, um, the E-S-S-E-R, that is the one associated to the CARES Act, um, with the federal government program, and we receive, will be receiving a little over a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, um, that, we are still in the process, in fact, there's an admin team, we're gonna meet tomorrow, talk a little bit more about how are we gonna use those funds, there's a number of ways we can use them, so, we will talk about that. Uh, the change, petty cash change funds, as I was looking through things today and, and just like, okay, it looks like some of the stuff had been rolled over, we needed to update it to what we're actually doing, so, um, those changes unfortunately came at the last moment, but they are, should be up to date. Also in your packet was information for the five-year forecast, um, we had talked somewhat about that the last meeting about some of the things that we're expecting, or at least I was expecting, changes. In your packet is the forecast is what the state looks for, that one, you've seen that before, I'm pretty sure. Then I used a, a company to help create the forecast, there's a few pages, um, kind of, the first one, just kind of giving a high overview of getting balances, revenues, expenditures, uh, it's a little interesting how things are, are evolving with their forecast, for example, under fiscal year 2021, you see revenues increasing by some, about a quarter million dollars. It's, that's kind of interesting in the fact that we are getting cut, the state, I, I've projected about a five-hundred-thousand-dollar cut from the foundation payment, which is the amount, I should take that back, not that much, this year, fiscal year 20, the state cut us a hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars, doubled that amount for next year, so not quite three hundred thousand dollars. Um, the forecast then in fiscal year 22 has half of that coming back in 23, we're basically back to where we were in fiscal year 19. Although you see, uh, you have these expenses and there is some hundred thousand dollars or so expected to be reduced from our income tax due to, um, unemployment effects, we still had the increase, that's because of the rolling in the, the extra point seven five income tax that was passed, that took effect January 1st of 2020. Most of that additional revenue is gonna really start showing up in fiscal year 2021. So, that is expected to be somewhere in the six hundred, six hundred and fifty thousand dollar range, seven hundred thousand of new school district income tax, so, that's offsetting the losses that we're seeing, um, through the, through, um, the, the school foundation and so forth. So, it does show we have a deficit of four hundred and twelve thousand dollars projected for '21, um, if it wasn't for the income tax, that amount probably would be at least a couple hundred thousand dollars higher. So if we're getting about six hundred thousand dollars in income tax, about four hundred thousand of it's gonna go towards the, uh, payment of the lease purchase agreement, uh, which was, which was to help finish the payment for the project. Um, anyways, the, so there's a kind of a synopsis on those few pages, you'll see bar graphs that's showing revenues and expenditures, and then it's the, the notes, and there's a lot of, uh, graphs in there, bar graphs showing history, showing the, the projections, there's some comments in there, there's system-generated comments, and then there's comments that I added, um, so, I don't know if it bored you by going into a lot of great detail, if you got questions now, um, I can try to answer them, or if you have questions that come up, um, you know, just reach out to me and I'll do my best.
Overall, yeah, I thought the report looked really good, it was easy to read and...
I hope to, this was my first go-around with that and hopefully fine-tune it and make it more effective and efficient in the future.
It's a great start.
That's all.
Any other questions or comments? Hey, roll call.
All right. Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Need a motion for employment of certified staff?
Thank you, Linda.
I'll second.
Thank you, Craig.
With hesitation.
Recommend to accept the resignation from Andrew Hunter as middle school principal effective July 31st, 2020.
I just, um, would like to say I'm not surprised, you do excellent work and you are quite amazing at your job, and I knew you would not stick around here forever as much as we would like, so...
Thank you. The school board, superintendent, director.
You're gonna be missed around here.
He, um, still gonna be here for, you know, quite a while with the, with the ESC, we hope, so, uh, we're gonna use him a lot, uh, the four days that we do have him, so we're glad he's here and certainly gonna miss him in the capacity that he's been in, but, uh, I've had a lot of conversations already about, uh, the direction we wanna go with that ESC position, and he's very open to that, so, he wants me to keep him busy.
Like that was ever a problem.
Yeah, that would be a problem.
Roll call, please.
Okay. Mrs. Jones? Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
We'll only say no.
Yes, yes.
Um, Mr. Methman?
Reluctantly, yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
We would all like to say no, but, yes.
You have a choice.
Okay, um, the second portion here, need a motion?
I'll move.
Gail?
I'll second.
Linda, thank you. Recommend issuing a one-year limited contract to Mackenzie Coleman as classroom teacher with two years' experience at a bachelor's degree for the 2021 school year. Recommend issuing a one-year limited contract to Paul Overmeyer as classroom with ten years' experience at a master's degree for the 2021 school year. This will be thirty percent of a workday and shall be position of co-athletic director. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for extended days between 2021, twenty, 2020, 21 school year, to be served before and after the scheduled school year. Mike Blue, twelve days, Robin Chamberlain, ten days, Jeff Hott, ten days, Matt Hoffman, twenty-five days, Zach Overmeyer, ten days for band camp, Marilyn Leone, ten days, Erin Montgomery, five days, Paul Overmeyer, ten days, Jeff Shaper, thirty-five days. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 20, 2021 school year. Robin Chamberlain, assistant athletic director, Josh Freese, head girls' basketball coach, Jeff Hott, co-athletic director, Paul Overmeyer, co-athletic director, Christine Steeman, assistant junior high volleyball coach, Tony Tier, head boys' basketball coach. Recommend to approve the following as volunteers for the 2020, 21 school year. Kelly Van Horn, cross-country, Tony Tier, golf. Recommend to approve the all middle school, high school certified staff as Friday school teachers for the 2021 school year. Recommend to approve all middle school, high school certified staff as pride teachers for the 2020, 21 school year. Recommend to approve all middle school, high school certified staff as zero-hour teachers for the 2020, 21 school year. Recommend to approve all certified staff in grades K through six for after-school intervention at a rate of twenty-eight, twenty-four per hour for the 2020, 21 school year, to be funded through the Title I-A grant fund or general fund. Recommend to approve Michaela Bauer as a certified substitute for the 2020, 21 school year.
Just a comment, I received an email today, uh, from county superintendents, uh, that we were approved by the health department to enter into phase two, Jeff Hott of, uh, opening the school back up for sports, so, we'll wait, uh, we'll do that, then we wait another fourteen days and if, uh, everything remains consistent or lower with the virus, then they'll move on to phase three.
What is phase two allowed?
I don't know. Did you mean cases, Linda?
No.
Oh, okay, okay.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
I have a motion for employment of classified staff.
I'll move.
Thank you, Craig. Thank you, Linda. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 2020, 21 school year. Opry Crawl, assistant volleyball coach, Bailey Graber, cheerleading advisors, grades seven through eight, Nikki Miller, cheerleading advisor, grades nine through twelve, Jake North, weight room strength, conditioning, Robin Rice, head junior high volleyball coach. Recommend to approve the following as volunteers for the 2020, 21 school year. Pam Payne, cross-country, Brian Wonderly, football.
Just a correction for you journalists, Nikki's first name is spelled with a C-K, not a T-K, I don't know if that's gonna go in there or not, but...
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. I have a motion for services and agreements.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Thank you, Steph and Craig.
I don't think that we're back to vacation. Right? Recommend to approve technical service agreement with Northern Buckeye Education Council from July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. Recommend to approve a service agreement with Northwest Ohio Educational Service Center for paraprofessional services from August 15th, 2020 to June 15th, 2021. The estimated cost is $20,562.63. Recommend to approve a service agreement with Northwest Ohio Juvenile Detention Training Rehabilitation Center from July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. Amount of service is $44 per student, per week, per, I'm sorry, per weekday for students assigned to the detention center. Questions, comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. I have a motion for other business.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Is that Galen?
Yep, yeah.
Anyone on Steph? Thank you. Recommend to revise the 2019, 2020 Athletic Code, making all athletes academically eligible, eligible for the start of the fall 2020 sports season. This is in accordance to the change made by OHSAA due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Recommend to authorize the superintendent to grant approval for teams involved in overnight state tournaments for fall, winter, and spring sporting events. Recommend to approve the following student fees for the 2020, 21 school year. Preschool, $45. Grades K through 12, $55. Recommend to approve the Activity Advisor and Coach Handbook for the 2020, 21 school year. Recommend to approve the Middle School, High School Athletic Code Handbook for 2020, 21 school year. Recommend to approve the drug testing policy for the 2020, 21 school year. This policy applies to all students in grades 9 through 12. Recommend to approve participation in the National School Breakfast Lunch Program in the Title I and Title II-A programs for the 2020, 21 school year. Recommend to approve the certification of standards governing types of foods and beverages sold on school premises, report from the Ohio Department of Education for the 2020, 21 school year. Recommend to approve the following breakfast lunch prices for the 2020, 21 school year. Grades K through 12 breakfast, $1.60. Extra milk, 50 cents. Grades K through 4 lunch, $2.75. Grades 5 through 12 lunch, $3. Adult lunch, $3.60. Questions or comments?
No, I'm, I'm really glad, at least part of me is glad, that we are moving to a dual sports program. In my experience, at Bryan, it works well. Actually, the kids that are doing dual sports are super motivated, keep their grades up. And so I'm looking forward to seeing what happens here at Dixville when we do that.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Anything under old business? Discussion? Any unannounced guests wishing to address the board? Okay. Um, we are going to be going into executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, disafford, or demotion, et cetera. So number one, we will not be taking any. Action, thank you. Afterwards. And our next school board meeting will be August, July 20th at 5:30. Can I have a motion for going into executive session?
I'll move.
Steph?
I'll second.
Galen, was it Galen?
Yep.
Um, we'll go, say, 6:30? Roll call?
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.